Everybody tonight, so first we're going to go ahead and hear the prayer from Mr. Leshor and then we could all stand for the p- 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 position of the flag.
Almighty God, we give you thanks for the work of teachers and other educators in our community who this week are preparing for the start of classes and for all they do to ensure that every student will learn, grow, and succeed in their care. We give thanks too for the work of administrators and support staff from bus drivers to guidance counselors who likewise dedicate themselves to the safety and nurturing of the youth in our community. Continue to bless their work, that our community may continue to prosper as the next generation prepares to take their places in our society. Bless our work too and Talbot County Government and give us the wisdom to empower those who work to better our county. In your most holy name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the people of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Leshor. That was great. Want to welcome everybody. So let's start tonight's agenda. Council has the agenda of August 23rd before us. So are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda? Okay, hearing none, on the chair moves that the agenda be accepted as unanimous consent. Okay, next on the agenda is the minutes of August 9th. We've had a chance to review them. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the minutes? Okay, hearing none, the chair moves that the minutes be accepted as unanimous consent. Next is the dispersments of August 16th and the 23rd. Council's had a chance to review the dispersments. Are there any deletions, additions, deletions, or corrections to the dispersments? Okay, council's happy with that. So hearing none, move that the dispersments be accepted as unanimous consent. Okay, tonight is a presentation of the Chesapeake College Review Budget Request. So if you guys want to come on up.
Good evening.
Good evening, guys. How are you? You guys want to introduce yourself? That'd be great.
Mr. President, my name is Cliff Cobbersmith. I'm the president of Chesapeake College.
Okay.
And I'm Karen Smith, the vice president for.
Okay, welcome, guys. Appreciate it.
It's great to be here. Mr. Leshor, we loved your prayer. We can really identify with the prayer because we started our classes yesterday.
That's great.
Very happy to report campus is very busy. We had more students on campus yesterday than we have seen since fall of 2019.
Wow.
We're really quite happy with it.
Good for you guys.
So we're just here to present our revised budget request. As you know, the state funded us at the full KID formula.
Mm-hmm.
We did not get that until late April when the recession finished.
Mm-hmm.
So we had a revised budget which we brought to our five service counties. We've given you that information. We have handouts if you wish to have those in front of you right now. That increase was $1,295.19. And you can see the distribution in terms of what it did for our budget. In particular, it helped us with adjustments to our salary scale across the campus. We had a salary study done this year and we found out in many technical areas in particular were woefully behind the market. And then we also did a 5% across-the-board increase for all full-time and permanent, part-time employees. We also have a request for two fund balance requests, one for $50,000 for technical contract assistance in developing our study, our plan to present to the state for our technical building renovation, and another $50,000 for an applicant tracking and HR management system because our old one is no longer going to be serviced and we have to purchase new software to fulfill that requirement. That is the request that we have for the county. There's no change in the county budget as this was due to state funding that came to us.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Okay. Ms. Smith, you want to?
No, I didn't have anything to add.
Okay, okay.
But thank you for your consideration.
Yep, okay. I appreciate it. I'm going to open up the council for discussion. Mr. DeVilleo?
I don't have any questions at this time. I'd be prepared to make the motion to authorize the fund balance change.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, we got. Counsel, would you like?
Good.
You're good? Mr. Pack, you good?
I'm fine.
Okay. Madam Secretary, we've got a motion second to go ahead and move forward with the request.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Leshor?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Okay, as simple as that. Thank you very much.
Congratulations on your, we appreciate your support.
Okay, no problem.
Congratulations on your fall enrollment and, and best for the coming semester. That's, that's great.
All right. Good job out there. Okay. Okay, next on the list is introduction of administrative resolution. Madam Secretary, would you mind read that resolution please, into record, please?
Yes, would you like me to read the title or the whole resolution?
Just the title, be fine.
Okay. Administrative Resolution Establishing the Frederick Douglass Park on the Tuckahoe Committee.
Okay, that's good. Mr. Thomas, you want to go ahead and explain that for us?
Sure. So this was an administrative resolution requested by council member Pack. As council will recall, in 2018, the council established the, an advisory committee that was a temporary committee tasked with assisting in the development of a master plan and an interpretive plan for the Frederick Douglass Park on the Tuckahoe. And what this administrative resolution would do is formally establish an ongoing committee that would serve as a liaison between those entities engaged in fundraising for the park and for the county council, which is consistent with administrative resolution the council adopted last October.
Okay, okay, great. Any discussion?
No, as Mr. Thomas just described, this would be a standing committee because we do know that it will take some time for the completion of this park to Frederick Douglass. And since the, the county cannot fundraise, you know, this committee would work for years to come with a, any funding that comes in to be applied to the park and reporting back to future councils as the progress moves forward. So again, the advisory committee had done their part, which was to get the interpretive plan done, which has been done and presented to council. And now this committee would be a standing committee which would go about the actual construction.
Okay, that's great. Any other?
I appreciate the collaboration between the county manager, the director of Parks and Rec, economic development, and tourism, working together collectively because I feel like that's what it's going to take to fundraise for this as well as make this a very successful endeavor. I think we're very fortunate to see a beautiful waterfront park like that up in Cordova and I'm looking forward to the fundraising going on and continuing this project. I think we're very fortunate for it.
Thank you, Mr. DeVilleo. Mr. Leshor, good?
Happy to see this moving forward.
Okay, Ms. Price?
Good.
Good. Okay, do I have a motion second to move forward with this?
Is this a, this a show of hands for introduction?
I'll just show our hands?
I'm sorry.
Okay.
By council?
Okay.
Mr. Callahan, this is an administrative resolution. Mr. Thomas, correct me if I'm wrong, but it can be voted on tonight.
That is correct.
Okay.
Mr. Pack, if you would like to make the motion, I'd be happy to second.
I would like to make a motion, Mr. DeVilleo, that we move this to a vote this evening.
And I second.
Thank you.
Okay, Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Yes, Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Leshor?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye. Thank you.
So we want to move it to a vote?
Yes, please.
Okay. Okay, good. All right, next on the agenda is introduction of a number resolution. Madam Secretary, could you go ahead and read that into the record, please?
Yes, a resolution to amend resolution number 175, a resolution to establish sewer service connection policies from the Unionville, Tunis Mills, and Copperville Sewer Service Area Low Pressure Forced Main Collection System to the Royal Oak Pump Station for the purpose of exempting county governmental uses and services from the provisions thereof, subject to certain conditions.
Okay. Mr. Clark, would you mind coming on up? And giving us a little bit of an overview of what we're looking at with this resolution so everybody can understand it?
Yeah, just very quickly, this is actually a policy resolution.
Okay.
So this is not part of the Comp. Warren Sewer Plan.
Okay.
This is a policy resolution, again, as mentioned, is for the forced main between the Unionville Pump Station and the Royal Oak Pump Station.
Okay.
So ultimately, this would provide the county the opportunity to extend sewer to a property that's owned by the county for government services to provide sewer to that property.
Got you. Good, good.
So.
Go ahead, Ms. Price.
Resolution 175 was something, well, about, about 12 years ago, just before I came on the council and I remember there was a, I remember coming and watching the meetings and there was a lot of discussion and, and then that council had to do a lot of work to make that so that you didn't poke holes, so to speak.
Right.
That it was very limited for Carol's Market and all that. And so we're starting to hear concerns that opening this up is going to open up, you know, properties for other development, which is something that the council, four, three, four councils ago, tried very hard to, to limit. So while this, this is written just for one particular county facility, I mean, I think it would be helpful to hear a little bit more about that, why, why it's necessary because I don't think we can do a septic tank or nor would we want to do a septic tank out there to, to get a little more information there to maybe even to reassure the public that this is very limited and it's not going to open it up for other development.
Right, and I think this, at this point in time, I mean, we could probably provide you with that during the public hearing, a listing of all the government-owned properties that would be outlined along the forced main.
Mm-hmm.
So that would be the limitation as well. So that would, again, it's this, the forced main from Unionville to the Royal Oak Pump Station. I think one of the questions would be, you know, we did look at trying to provide sewer to the repurposing facility at one point. There could be other, other property owned by the county that might need a service that, you know, ultimately that would be outside the sewer service area that potentially might, again, need, we would have to go through the process of amending the Comp. Warren Sewer Plan as, you know, to provide sewer to that property if it's outside the sewer service area. But this resolution would not prevent us from doing that. So right now, I guess, you know, the concern is, is that if we do have a government or a property that's owned by the government that's currently not, does not comply with resolution 175, we would not be able to, to extend sewer to that property. And that would be the case, let's say, if it's an unimproved property. Right now, you know, under resolution 175, it would, you know, we have to have it determined that it was a failing septic system, it was improved. So those would be the conditions that are currently under 175 that right now, if a government facility were to be proposed, you know, and it was vacant, we would not be able to do anything.
So we can do that, we can exempt ourselves and say, okay, well, we're allowed to connect and another business that would have those same problems with failing septic systems wouldn't be able to. This is really okay?
We would still go through the Comp. Warren Sewer Plan process. I think the key would be is that resolution 175 would not be, I guess, the controlling factor. We'd still work with the council on moving forward with the Comp. Warren Sewer Plan process, but we, if it was a vacant property per se, it wouldn't be disqualified because of resolution 175.
Okay. Yes, thank you, Mr. Callahan.
Yep, for sure.
As Mr. Clark just explained, what this does is not, would not open 175 up for, for development of residential, commercial growth. What this would allow future councils the ability to do is to connect to that line for a governmental use, whether you were doing a emergency service station out there, if Mr. Clark needed a building to serve public works out there. Right now, under 175, you have to have an existing septic field that has failed and you have to butt the line. So basically, 175, when it was drafted, it wasn't intended to exclude the county from, from using the line for county purposes. It was never added, the language was never added in, but the council certainly didn't, didn't want to exclude itself from using the line for the governmental purposes. What this language does is put that emphasis back in 175 that was intended, that if it's a governmental use, again, if it's a emergency services station, if it's a public works department entity, it could be a ball field, we want to run sewer to.
Parks.
Could be a park, exactly, if you want to run sewer to. Right now, under 175, you can't. So what this would allow you to do for governmental purposes and not for this council, maybe two, three councils down the road. But they, this would give them the ability to do that.
Right.
Which right now, they don't have.
Okay. Great, thank you, Mr. Pack, Mr. DeVilleo.
Yeah, it's, it's an excellent idea. You know, there's a 41-acre Parks and Rec-owned piece of property that would be right there. And we've been discussing this with Bill Burton Park, what can we do with bathrooms? Because when you have parks without bathrooms, you end up with dirty diapers in the woods. And I don't think anybody wants that. So, no, it does not allow us to instantly throw up a bunch of houses and condominiums and destroy the environment. This is a matter of fact of a way of saving the environment if we have a nice park there and Parks and Rec is able to begin utilizing that green space of 41 acres. And if there's anything that this council recently has been, it's aggressive on park space. I'm very excited for that. But again, if you don't have a bathroom and people are coming to walk trails and birdwatch.
Right.
Things get messy nasty quickly.
Okay. Mr. Leshor?
Mr. Clark, we were, we were investigating the possibility of septic this spring during the, during the wet season?
That is correct, for the repurposing facility.
For the.
Yes, sir.
And, and did we make a determination from that testing?
That has not been made yet. That's still within the environmental health office at this point in time.
I see.
I do know one of the problems that we have run into is that because of the state's prohibition on bermed infiltration ponds, that that's one of the things that cannot be used and that's one of the items that they were looking at possibly using out there. We are still working with environmental health as to utilizing what they call composting toilet, but that's not been finalized and determined yet at this point in time.
So we may actually be jumping a little ahead of ourselves on, on this at this point. Till we, till we have those determinations, whether there might be a different course.
This is not site-specific. I think you're, you're not following the bouncing ball. This is not, this is allowing future councils the ability to connect to once, connect to the line which they don't have. This is not site-specific.
But this is a site that this is, this is being done for is?
No, 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 it's not being done for. There's nowhere drafted in, in this language that's site-specific.
I understand, but that's, that's the motivation for doing this at this point.
That's not true. You don't, you don't know the motivation, but that may be your motivation behind it, but that's not the motivation behind how it was drafted.
Okay.
Very good.
All right, can I show our hands, a show of hands of, introduction to this?
Mr. Callahan, this will be known as resolution 334 with a public hearing on Tuesday, September 13th at 6:30.
Okay, that sounds great. All right, next on the agenda is introduction of legislation. If you mind going ahead and reading, reading the title into the record for that, please, that'd be great.
Bill to amend Chapter 190 of the Talbot County Code, Zoning, Subdivision, and Land Development Regarding the Expansion of Structures Utilized for Nonconforming Uses Subject to Certain Conditions.
Okay, Brandon, you want to come on up? Yep. Would you, would you, how you doing, guys?
All right, counsel, thank you. Bryce Yelton, planning and zoning.
Okay.
Brendan Tarleton, planning and zoning.
Okay, great, great. You want to go ahead and give a brief overview on what we're, what we're looking at with this?
Absolutely.
It'd be great.
This text amendment would essentially add conditions into our existing non-conforming uses section of our code. This allows uses that are not permitted in certain zoning districts to be continued so long as they're continued, continuously used. They're actually allowed to expand currently up to 20% of their gross floor area under our current provisions. This will allow for certain nonconforming uses to add an additional 3,000 square feet, provided however that they don't go over 100% of their gross floor area. They, they would still be persuaded to the special exception approval from the Board of Appeals to get this 20% extra, and they would also have to go for a major site plan approval at 3,000. It would be minor site plan approval at anything under 3,000 square feet. So you, you've got two processes going on potentially here.
Got you.
And just as a summary for the last planning commission meeting, the applicant of this proposed amendment actually presented several options to the planning commission regarding the actual threshold for expansion for these nonconforming uses. The planning commission chose to go with one of the applicant's options that wasn't the original text that you received, based off of some comments that were received from the council at that time of the introduction. And they made amendments to it to include the 100% as the applicant previously proposed 110% of that increase.
I got you. Okay. Good. Mr. Thomas, you want to add anything to this or?
No, I have nothing to add.
Okay. Counsel discussion?
At this point.
Everybody good? Mm-hmm. With this? Okay.
Can you show our hands?
Yep. Show our hands.
This is for introduction of this legislation?
Mm-hmm.
By counsel?
Mr. Callahan, this will be known as bill 1525 with a public hearing on Tuesday, September 13th at 6:30 PM.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Okay, on next on the agenda, I'm gonna, I'm going to hand this over to Mr. Leshor for overview of this proposal amendment.
Do we, so I'm, this, this relates to bill 1524. And at our workshop with the planning commission on solar systems, we discussed seeking the means of preserving the highest quality croplands in Talbot County. However, when we, when, when the draft legislation came through, it didn't have such a provision in it. And, and a discussion from the planning commission is, came forward with this suggested language that would amend or would, would correct that omission. And so it, it came out since after the planning commission's recommendation on the draft legislation. The idea here is if you, if you take, you know, we, we certainly will need to cite large-scale solar energy systems. If we attempted to ban it as some other jurisdictions have done, we simply get preempted by the state's Public Services Commission. If we do nothing, they will go wherever they will go, wherever the, the market chooses. But in the course of doing so, they may choose, chew up some of our, of our best cropland in Talbot County. And in the workshop, we, we directed the planning commission to, to try to find some path, some middle course that might be acceptable to the Public Service Commission and might spare our best cropland in Talbot County from, from this. There are a lot of other good things this legislation does, but this was, this was an omission. In this amendment, the, it, the use of the Malth score, the Maryland Agricultural Land Preservation Foundation, this, this score, it uses an existing determination, an existing, if you will, scientific or neutral scoring system for, that is used to select farmland for easements, for where we should buy the easements on the most valuable cropland. We don't have a lot of money to do this, and so right now, there's a whole lot more demand for that, those easements than there is money to pay for that. This legislation already will address that particular, or, or will, will channel some funding in this, in this direction. But what this will do is set up a score. Here it's at it at 240 in this legislation, and the land that is, that scores above that, in other words, the best cropland, the most, the, what the cropland that would be most valued for those easements would be, would be exempt from, from, or ineligible for those solar energy installations. And the lower-value cropland, that, that's the area. And, and setting the score at 240 would, would leave about 50% of, of cropland available for, for large-scale solar energy systems. So that's, that's simply, that's the, the general overview of the intent of this, of this amendment. And my purpose in introducing it now, our hearing on this is not till our next meeting, but I'm, I'm seeking to introduce this now so that the public will be able to review the amendment along with the legislation before we get to the public hearing. This is just in the interest of transparency for that, for that process.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Leshor. Any other discussion?
I would just like to say that I, I appreciate the time from Chip Council and from Mark Conley's wife, Mark Conley's wife, for the Eastern Shore Land Conservancy. Carol Bean, sorry, Carol Bean. Oh, she's in the room. I'm sorry. I greatly appreciate the, appreciate the time sitting down and going through this between meeting with somebody from the Eastern Shore Land Conservancy and the farming community who understand and value the same thing, protecting the land. You know, farmers have been excellent in cover crops and, and protecting the runoff and, and doing all of the right things. And we want to make sure that the highest yielding farms are protected. If we, you know, when COVID first broke out, one of my first concerns was what can we do to get the watermen's, the protein that they're catching directly into the local hands? If we can't buy chicken in the store and steak, we're catching it right here, we're catching the fish, let's figure out the best way to do it. And as things change across America and across our rural lands, I want to make sure that we are protecting the farmland, that we're not taking off the, the topsoil, and we're not doing something to the land that we wouldn't be able to get back. Because we've seen solar panels change drastically in 20 years. We know that they get smaller, they get stronger, and they get better. And I, I want to make sure that, that we're doing the best things that we can. And using the Malth score is something that we've already been using. It, it is a known study, a known test. We have way more applicants every single year than we're able to fund for it. And so by receiving some additional funding out of this to help increase those, the amounts of farms going into that, I see it as a somewhat of a win-win. When we have to, we, we are receiving a lot of state pressure that we have to accept these solar panels and these large sizes, I, I really appreciate the time that, that Mr. Counsel put together, meeting with the different farmers, helping to explain it and understand it for the community. This, this is going to be a big change. It's not something that anybody wants to see. We would much rather see, you know, the sunflowers out and the doves flying over, but, and we don't want to mess up the geese pattern and waterfowl pattern by having tons of solar panels all over the place, but unfortunately, we don't have a lot of control over that. What we do have is an ability to tell the state, this is what we've been doing, this is how we want to rank our farms and how we have been. And I believe that that is a strong standing ground that they'll listen to. They don't have to, but I believe it will be a strong stance for them to.
Thank you, Mr. DeVilleo. Mr. Pack?
I have a comment.
You got? Ms. Price?
Thank you.
Okay, all right, can we show our hands to introduce this?
So Mr. Callahan, DeVilleo, and Leshor are introducing?
I believe Ms. Price.
Yep, yep.
And Ms. Price. Oh, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
This will be heard along with the public hearing on bill 1524 on September 13th at 6:30.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Madam Secretary. Okay, next on the agenda is, I'll vote.
Resolution number 331, a resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan for the purpose of reclassifying and remapping two parcels of real property located at 29659 Matthewstown Road, Maryland Route 328, Easton, Maryland, shown on Tax Map 26 as parcel 45, and located on K-Max Street, Easton, Maryland, shown on Tax Map 26 as parcel 186, from W2 and S2 Planned Water and Sewer Service in three to five years to W1 and S1 Immediate Priority Status and the amendment.
Okay. Ray, you want to come on up and, Mr. Thomas?
Yes, with respect to the amendment?
Yes.
It just simply clarifies that it's.
Yes, with respect to the amendment, it just simply clarifies that it's parcel 186, parcel C, which actually consists of 1.78 acres of land. And then the Exhibit A attached to the resolution was updated on July 27th to reflect that. So just to clarify the, the exact property.
Okay, that sounds good.
And again, we, we had, I guess, met with the Planning Commission, I believe they voted four to zero in favor of recommending that the Council, I guess, adopt this, finding that it is consistent with the comp plan.
Okay.
The Public Advisory Board also voted three to zero recommending the county council adopt Resolution 331.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Clark. Want to open it up to council?
Can I, one question?
Yeah, go ahead.
I, I remember, I'm sorry, this goes back a couple of weeks. Did we vote on the amendment? Is this as amended or?
No, I believe you have to vote on the amendment and then vote on, if the amendment passes, then vote on the resolution as amended.
Right, right. That's what we gotta do. Right, okay. Any, any discussion on the amendment?
Not on the amendment, I think the amendment was just, again, as Mr. Thomas clarified, was just clarifying, correcting a, that, that parcel the way it was listed.
Okay, great. And anybody else? Good?
Not on the amendment, no.
Okay, okay.
It's an important correction, but that's all.
All right. Is, is there a motion in, in?
I'll make a motion that we approve the amendment.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion, the second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye. Okay. All right, so we want to open for discussion for the amendment?
Well, for the, for the, for the legislation itself.
Yeah, legislation, I'm sorry.
Well, this is, this is asking for W1, S1 for, for this tract of land that would then be connected to the Easton Wastewater Treatment Plant. The Easton Wastewater Treatment Plant is the best-performing plant in the county or for some area farther around. I don't see any reason to, to deny this, and, and Easton has requested it. I'm, I'm prepared to move forward.
Okay. Mr. DeVilleo?
And, and I would concur. I had a wonderful meeting with the Neighborhood Service Center last night with Ron Engel. We addressed some of the concerns about affordable housing. And, you know, we said that, you know, you can't really just do it six houses at a time, which is sort of what we've been doing, but unfortunately, that, that's what's working right now, or what, what's available now. So anyone who's willing to help contribute towards that, I'm, I'm thankful for their, their efforts and that.
Right, right. Mr. Pack?
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. Well, I guess my, my questions and concern a couple of weeks ago was the impetus for us being here again today.
Yep.
And those concerns that I had were genuine. You know, being a part of this council back in 2008, when this development first came before this body, there was some concerns, some legitimate concerns that were, that were, that were brought to the attention of the council around traffic. And they were mentioned in the transcripts that I quoted, and I'm not going to pull back to those again. My concerns were whether or not those issues have been addressed. And it talked about the East-West Connector, it talked about, you know, Black Dog Alley, and whether or not those improvements have been done. What had changed, what has changed then to now, to why this is now a development that should go forward? I also had concerns and questions regarding the reply back from the school board. I believe Mr. Thomas was in front of us, and don't remember if he had seen the school board report at that time, but I'm sure we've all had a chance to look at it. Some of us hadn't seen it. I got it, I was coming back from a trip, if you remember, and didn't have a chance to look at the entire report. And even the school board report put about some concerns. As we have seen through our own budget, the school board, as far as its population, has grown immensely every single year, seems to be. Although they have lost students, they've picked students up at the same time. So, you know, those questions and concerns were just wanting to find out what has transpired between then and now, what, if any, mitigation was taken into place regarding the school board's concern. And so I wanted to hear that. I wanted to hear back from the town, whether or not the school board's report weighed in, any decision-making, whether to split zone the property. If you remember when we were working with Lakeside many, many years ago, the proposal came about to split zone the property as a way of alleviating some of the impact of the whole parcel being developed all at once. So, you know, my concerns were, were just around those areas. And I would like to hear if any of that had been addressed and how the schools' concerns have been addressed at this time.
If it would please the council, I did request that the mayor come up and, and, and attend the meeting and address that. Those were some of the similar concerns I believe he had when this was vetoed the first time, and now he's come back in, in support of this.
Okay, okay.
I see that he's in attendance, and I would, if, it's up to him, but I would request that he would come up if, if available.
Mayor, would you like to come up? Okay. Welcome, Mayor Willey.
Couple of things. First off, this is not the same development that was vetoed back in 2008. That was the Hunter's Mill project. At that time, it was vetoed, not so much that the facilities haven't been put in place to address the traffic issue. The developer was unable to fund them, and the town was in no position to fund them at that point. So the project was vetoed. Since that time, you've had at least three traffic signals put in. You've been right at Standard, Standard Street. You're down at, I guess that's Milepost Road, and you're also down at Black Dog Alley now. The county has put a lot of money into Black Dog Alley, bringing that up to grade and what have you, and has made a good, good decision there. The, the changes to the highway involve extra lanes at the intersection of 328 and 50. You also have deceleration lanes going into Standard Street and also at Milepost Drive. And they're also planning for the, the development that will have going on down at the Gannon Estates. So we have made changes. The school board, I'm not familiar with, maybe somebody else here tonight from the council would, would know more about that. But that, that's not on, I don't have an answer for you on that.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Would anybody else that might know a little bit more information about the school board, is anybody, is welcome to come up and help Mr. Pack? Yep?
And while Don comes up, I would like to just address, and correct me if I'm wrong, I don't believe Lynn Thomas was given a copy of the letter that we were addressing at the meeting last time.
Okay.
And I see he has glasses on. I don't think he had vision enough to read it when we were holding it in the air.
I got you.
So I would like to clarify that to the public, that he did not have access to the letter that we were trying to address.
Okay, thank you.
So after Don speaks, I'd like, I would like that addressed because that letter was dated, was addressed to him in December.
But he did not have a copy, nor did he know what we were holding up at that meeting to address.
Right, so after Don's done, maybe we can talk about that.
Okay.
All right, good evening. Donna Abatello, Eastern Town Council. So back when we first started looking at this neighborhood back in the fall of 2021, I emailed, I guess it's past Superintendent Kelly Griffith, for any suggestions or any input, since we're looking at the development on Matthewstown Run and also possibly down the road, Poplar Hill off Oxford Road. She put me in contact with somebody over at the Board of Ed, and I apologize, I don't remember his name, but he is, I believe, the author of that letter.
Karen Safer.
Thank you, yes. And they eventually got back to us with their concerns. And Mr. Thomas, in his defense, I'm sure he gets lots of emails, he did forward that on to the council in, in December, thank you, in December of 2021. And that was something that we, we did have at our disposal. And I'm not going to speak on the other four council members, you know, whether that weighed in on their decision or not. And I, but, you know, that was, that was definitely a factor for me in, in my vote on it. But that was, you know, I, like I said, I wanted to speak on Mr. Thomas's behalf because he did have that letter, he did forward it to us. He might not have seen it that night, but he did forward it to us.
Could you tell us the impact that it had, positive or negative, for you?
As a school teacher, I'm always concerned about the size of classrooms. I also were looking at it that this is, but I do want to say that this is, you know, 200 houses. 200 houses that I'm sure Talbot County, if you read the letter, said over time, they could face, you know, we could, we could definitely handle 200 houses. But you're also looking at Down in Trap, you're looking at Poplar Hill, so that was their concern. I don't think one development was necessarily their concern, so. So, anyway, that's where the letter came from.
Okay.
Don, do you remember, do you remember the vote on this part? What was the outcome of the vote?
At the council?
Yes.
For the PUD, it was three to two.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you, Don. Appreciate you coming up. Lynn, do you, you want to speak, Lynn?
I don't really have much to add. I will clarify and apologize for not recalling at the previous meeting that I had in fact received the correspondence that was referenced.
Yeah.
I did not recall receiving the letter because it wasn't mailed to me. It was in fact an email, which I did turn around and forward to the council the day after receiving it, and they had it in time for their consideration. As Mr. Abatello just indicated, the vote was three to two. And I believe, if I recall correctly, among those voting not to approve the application, they cited, to some degree, the impact on the schools.
So my, my concerns aren't something that I'm making up here, then. Other council members on the town shared my same concerns. Because if, if you, if you look at the letter, you've had a chance to look over it, you know, they, they said, they say right on the front of their letter, I'm reading, "A more measured build-out of development projects would allow the necessary, necessary time to assess the impact." So they're asking for a more measured approach, and Mr. Don Tella was correct, they're talking about more than just this one project. So not, again, for, for clarification, it's not just this one project, they list all the projects that you had sent to them.
Right, they assessed multiple projects that were at various points in the pipeline at the time.
Exactly. And they were asking for a more measured build-out. And that's why, you know, my concerns are, you know, is there a way to do that? Is there a way to, to split zone some of these projects and not bring them all online all at one time? I mean, we were asked back in 2007 the same thing, the town is asking for your cooperation in helping the town control growth and time to grow with the infrastructure. And the board is asking for the same thing. We need some time here. And if we're all partners working together, I mean, we gave the, the town time back in '08 to do just that. The school board is asking for you to now to say, we need some time. And it doesn't sound like, I mean, it was a three-to-vote, and I think some of the council members were, were, were having the same concerns I'm having here. Is that when do we say, hey, look, big-picture-wise, this is going to be, maybe not impact just for Matthewstown Road, but this is going to have a ripple effect throughout the county when we have these big tracts, tracts of land being developed? And though this is not the exact same parcel as the Hunter's Mill, but it's the same track, same track of roadway.
So I, I agree with all that, and those are the same things that I spoke of before. And this is the first I'm learning that it was that close of a vote on the, on the town council, and there's not been a lot of changes. You know, the traffic's short. There's been some traffic like that and some, you know, acceleration/deceleration lanes, which helps a little bit. That's not my biggest concern. My, my concern, again, is you have to take everything as totality. I don't disagree that, you know, Easton has a wonderful wastewater treatment plant, and that's, that's not my concern. But we've talked about, you know, the impact and what it does, obviously, to the school systems. I have to, my job is to think about this particular project, the, the project at Poplar Hill, the massive project in Trap, and what that's going to mean for government infrastructure. The, not just the capital costs of building a school or an extra wing to a school or renovating it, or building another emergency services, you know, facility in these places. It's not just the one-time capital expenses, which impact fees can help with, but it's the ongoing cost of, you know, more students per pupil, funding, you know, and, and additional staff, you know, in, in county government, particularly in emergency services. And so while a vote is not necessarily, I don't like this project or that project, I'm looking at what this is going to do to the whole county and how that affects it. And again, you know, the property taxes, we've talked a lot over the last few years.
Ms. Price, excuse me, one thing, do we have any more, any?
Oh, for him, no, no, no.
Okay, okay.
You can, you can get out of the hot seat there.
Okay.
But we don't, we don't get the additional property tax revenue with the, with the revenue cap. We're not seeing the, the additional revenue for, for, in the property taxes. The towns will, you know, they get that, but the, the county does not. So we're not even getting the additional property tax revenue in any measurable way. So what I've said before, you know, and it's not something that we do now, you know, we, you know, municipalities don't fund the schools. They don't help with the capital costs. But if they're getting the benefit of additional property tax revenue and those types of things, maybe that needs to be looked at. So this isn't a, a, a dig on any particular project, but, you know, we do have to look big picture and what it means to all of the citizens in the county when we approve things like that. And none of the developers, not one, has downsized it. I think people would have been a lot more tolerable of Trap had it not been 2,500 homes, which is another 5,000 to 7,000 people. I know it's going to take a long time to build that out. But none of the developers seem to be willing to downsize a little bit or to say, you know what, we realize the impact this is going to have on the county. And in addition to the impact fees that we pay, we are going to contribute more towards, you know, more towards the infrastructure or, or something. And I don't see that from any of them. And that's frustrating to me because if it's not from them and the developers who, and I, look, hey, I'm a capitalist, I, you know, businesses have a right to make money. But it's at, if it's at the expense of the taxpayers, and I'm going to have, you know, we're going to do something to raise their taxes. You can't do it in property taxes, has to be done in income taxes. You raise their income taxes, and they're going to leave, they're going to leave our county. And so then the very thing you're trying to do to raise the revenue, you chase away a handful, literally a handful, of high-income earners, and we've actually lost income tax revenue. And that's it. That's all we've got, is, you know, is, is those two things. Yeah, we get the initial bump of recordation and, um, recordation tax. But after that, that's, that's a one-time thing. So that's why I think some council members are raising these concerns. It is not a reflection of the project itself, it's not a reflection of the wastewater treatment plant, you know, in Easton, which does a great job. But it's a reflection of the entirety of what we have to look for as a county council, looking at the entire county impact to our citizens.
Okay.
I've got a question for Mr. Smith.
Yeah, yeah.
If you would come up, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Has this project shrunk in size from when it was initially conceptualized?
Well, it's, it's half the size of what the Two Oaks project was back in 2007 that Mr. Pack referenced. In terms of this project at this location, I mean, we certainly could have proposed a denser project under the town's regulations. I think this project started at 202 units when we submitted it. It's approved at 200. But the zoning would have permitted us to ask for much greater density. But consistent and compatible with the established development in that area, we maintain that same pattern, and, and that's the density that we propose. So it's certainly denser, I'm sorry.
I didn't think it was half. I thought it was only about 50 houses left. I thought the original was 250, now it's 200.
I believe the original was 550 homes in the Two Oaks project. And that would be the two, these, this 200 homes plus the 50 that's in Hunter's Mill, because the original Two Oaks project covered both of those parcels. And I also believe the Two Oaks project had some commercial development included within it as well, in addition to those 550 homes. I could be wrong about the numbers, Lynn, do you know?
And then, I know Mr. Pack referenced the apartment buildings, which are not a part of this, but however, seven apartment buildings could definitely add to the school population and, and the need for emergency services. So that's, while it's not part of this project, it is still sitting there and could be built this time.
I haven't been involved with that project. But there is a project at Elliott Road in 328 that has been approved, an apartment project. There was also talk last meeting of an apartment project sort of behind Hunter's Mill. That project has never been proposed, has never come forward. And also, the Poplar Hill Farm project hasn't been, I think it's been submitted, but it's certainly never been approved by the town. So the, the school board's letter speaks to some projects that aren't in the pipeline at this time, particularly that Poplar Hill.
It, it does speak of the Poplar Hill, it does speak of the Elliott Row apartment complex. It doesn't speak about that second possible apartment complex behind this one, which is already S1. So that, you know, you don't have to come back for it. is already S1. So that, you know, you don't have to come back for any input from the council because that's already S1.
But that's not our site.
No, no, it's not your site. But again, you know, it's not your site, but it's the totality is what we're talking about here, Zach. It's not just, we're only talking about this one project when you've got three, four other projects lined up behind it. So you're talking about 202 homes at the Gannon project, you're talking about 120 apartments at Elliott Road, talking about another 439 units on Popular, not counting the other one that's sitting behind the Gannon project. That's already S1. You only have to come back for it for that one.
Right. But again, those projects aren't approved, and I think you've let the town do its job in reviewing those projects.
I understand that. This is the only one we have input on. This is the only one we can give.
Not true. Popular Hill you'll have input on. I mean, that project requires growth allocation, so you have.
Yes, it does.
It's not my project.
Right, you have to come back for growth allocation. Yeah, that's, and that's because it's in the critical areas. That's the only one, and that's because of the critical area. But you're right. But these other ones that's outside the critical area, we have no input. And the only reason why we have the input on that critical area, because you're already, the town has already used up all its growth allocations. Any critical area, you've used all those up. They're gone. So that's the only reason why we have input on that one, is because you've already used up all your growth allocation in the critical area. Not you, per se. Not you, not you, not you, not you. But you see my point here? So I'm just, you know, look, I'm just asking questions, and I think a lot of people around this county has the same questions. You know, it was a three-two vote on the town, so obviously two of the council members probably have the same questions.
I don't know if that's fair. I mean, we don't know what their reasons were.
I don't know. I said probably. I didn't say definitely. Probably.
They had concerns, whatever those concerns were.
Also, if I could just, you know.
Yeah, sure.
I think it's only fair to distinguish this from the Trap project. I mean, this is 200 homes in Easton.
I never brought Trap project up. Some of the other council members have.
And just to be clear again, I mean, this property's been in the town for 15-plus, 20 years. It's been, this is the area in your comp plan, in the town's comp plan, which says is appropriate for development, residential development. So that's exactly what this developer's doing. The town has the water and wastewater to serve it, and so I do think it's the appropriate place for this development.
Right. Well, let me correct myself. I did bring Trap in the context of working with them to split zone that project, so I stand corrected. Because of the impact on developing that entire parcel as S1, through those negotiations with the town and with the developer, we came to a point of split zoning that project. So that, you're correct.
But again, I think, you know, 2,500 homes versus 200, it's certainly distinguishable, the scale of it.
We have to add them all up. In my mind, I have to think about the whole thing. And again, as I just, I'll repeat myself, that not one developer has decided to either downsize or to do a slower build-out, saying, "Well, okay, we'll only build 20 a year," or something like that, to give the county time, you know, to absorb it, to change some of the laws. You know, maybe we need, you know, I won't be here, but maybe in a couple of years, what needs to go on the ballot is eliminating the revenue cap and replacing it with a rate cap, which at least we could capture, you know, the ongoing revenues from property tax without raising anybody's rate. Their individual tax bills wouldn't go up. But what happens with things like this is then the rates go down, and people, and people are like, "Oh, that's great," you know. And I'm a conservative going, "Hey, it's wonderful for, you know, for taxes to go down." But in this case, when you've got an impact, so again, that's what I think about, I have to think about the totality, and just because one's 200 and one's 2,500, they still all add up to the same number at the end of the day that the county has to take care of.
We've heard a lot of, heard that term a lot tonight, and I think if the public notices anything, it's that, that growth in a rural county like ours is very challenging. We do need housing units added to the market because we have two industrial or commercial lots that we want to fill up, you know. And we have businesses that are here that are looking for employees, and the average age of the Talbot County resident's 51. I don't think we're going to start setting records by popping out babies to 50-year-olds who are moving here. And when we start talking about totalitarian, total, you know, picture thing, we've only addressed Talbot County public schools. We have not addressed that there's a brand-new school down on Port Street that's just opening up. We haven't addressed that St. Peter and Paul has had a major expansion. We haven't addressed that the country school has had a major expansion. And again, the average age of Talbot County's 51 years old. And we're looking at 200 homes, which are going to be in a price range of the individuals that we're looking to employ here. These are the scientists. These are the doctors that the hospital's needing. These are the nurses that we have that are going to be able to afford these houses. And it is, it's an incredible struggle. But if you ride down Matthewstown Road and just use that as an example for growth, I don't want a whole bunch of Guinea ridges popping up. You know, that's, and I'm sure most people don't even know what that is, you know, but it's a new development that's on Matthewstown Road where there are two-acre parcels per house so that they can have septic. And that's what you get, you know. If you stop this growth in a planned neighborhood that has been planned for 20 years, you start seeing farmers saying, "All right, yeah, I'll give up these 20 acres for 10 houses." And you keep seeing that over and over and over again. And that's when you start messing up the flight patterns for the birds, the migratory, the hunting industry. And again, with the average age of being 51 years old, this isn't just a young family community that we have here. So this is extremely challenging. I'm never surprised when you see split votes on this because it is scary to think, "Yes, we're going to add 200 homes." But we're adding 200 homes into a spot that has been planned for 20 years. And if we don't continue following the plan, then we should have thrown it out 20 years ago, 15 years ago, five years ago. But in my mind, the infrastructure's built around this. The developer's going to have to continue to make improvements as we keep hearing about when development comes, they have to do a traffic survey, then they're forced to make those kinds of improvements and pay for it. And we don't build roads speculatively. We don't build schools speculatively. And for us to just go off of the school board's opinion of what a development would do to it, then they should be the county council as well. They have a very finite job that they look at. They don't think about job creation. They don't think about what growth we're trying to do for businesses. They don't hear from businesses saying it. They don't hear from the realtors saying, "We can't even find houses for first-time home buyers." And then we have a developer who's willing to come in, who's willing to take it on the chin and give some money back to help reduce the cost, to make it more affordable for some people. That doesn't happen when you have a farmer, again, giving up two-acre lots over and over. So it's an extreme challenge, but I'm willing to support the plan that we've been following on this. And at this time, I would be willing to make a motion to approve Resolution 331 as amended.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I mean, it's eligible for vote. Is that correct? It doesn't necessarily require a motion to move it to a vote.
Correct.
Correct. Do I have a second?
I think you can just call for the roll.
Okay.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
No.
Mr. Pack?
Okay, thank you, council. Okay, let's move on to presentation of a draft on Talbot County Land Preservation. I think it's Preston here?
Yes, I believe he's in the hallway.
Okay, all right, he's coming up with everybody. Yep.
All right. Thank you for being a gentleman.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So.
Can you tell everybody who you are?
Preston Pepperd, Talbot County Parks and Recreation.
Yep, okay. Because there's a few people out here. There could be three or four people watching this.
So I'm here tonight to get council's approval of the LPPRP. It's the Land Preservation, Parks and Recreation Plan. What it is, is it's a document that's completed every five years. It goes to the state of Maryland. It was, basically, it's instrumental in us getting our program open space acquisition and development funds. So this year, we did a little bit different. We didn't write it in-house. We actually contracted with a writer. The same person that actually wrote ours also wrote Dorchester's, Carolines, and Kent Counties as well. There's a lot of things that go through the state that is really hard for, sometimes for the common person to understand. It makes a lot more sense to somebody that's in that writing area. So again, this is something that we do every five years. I do want to say thank you to some people that were over in planning and zoning and permitting that helped us with this. Not only did they, this is something that they had to do. This is some GIS stuff that we are not able to do in-house, that we can't do as far as in parks and recreation, along with trying to clean up some of the things that were done. So Ann Bryce and Mark Kahoon were very instrumental. So I mean, a big thank you to them. Without them, we would probably still be working on this plan. So again, this plan is something that it's not detailed into the matter of. You're not going to see exact projects that are going to be done at any time. This is more of an overarching plan that just is going to span five years. We have to do an annual report every year that then spells out what we're going to be doing in that year. So we do that every year. So this is more of a, of an instrument that the state then uses to overlay an entire state plan, to see how much property is in conservation for the entire state, not just for Talbot County. A lot of it's also proximity reports to see, you know, if there's enough parks in close proximity to high-population areas, things like that. So again, this is something that, you know, we do every five years. It goes through the park board. It was approved by the park board. Planning and zoning approved it, and I am requesting council's approval tonight.
Okay. Appreciate it, Preston. Any discussion, council?
As the liaison, Mr. Pepper, I'm constantly amazed at the hard work that you do with the challenging times. Everybody knows that there's a referee shortage in every single sport. They're constantly getting beat up by the parents and the kids now, and I see that pretty similar to your role, you know. You kind of are the sports ref, whether it's kids camp, whether it's ice skating, whether it's anything parks-related. People come to you, well, whether it's trash at a park or a dirty porta potty, they're calling you and they're upset. And you show up in a truck. You're one of the few department heads that picks up trash around the community to maintain your properties. And I want to thank you for the work that you do because I know you don't get the thanks that you deserve. I've read through this plan, and I'm very happy with it. We have a beautiful area, beautiful parks, beautiful sports complexes, and great pools. You know, I was standing on the St. Michael's pool this weekend, and my kids, we all just love it. And it's due to your leadership, and I want to thank you for that. Thank you for putting this plan forward, and I'd be happy to make the motion to approve.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion to second to approve the plan.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Okay.
Mr. Callahan, if I may, I want to applaud some of the content of this plan. Well-thought-out.
Yep.
It's forward-looking. It makes acknowledgements of the way waterways and trails are valued, something that I hope to see, that we see more of in our offerings. And it also, it also makes a nod to the role played by our municipalities, the towns, in providing recreational facilities. And I think that that kind of comprehensive look and that acknowledgement is an important one. And so I thank you and for all those involved in the creation of this, for the thoroughness and the forward-looking nature of this report. Thank you.
And I should have probably said that. This is not just a Talbot County document as far as Talbot County government goes. This is Talbot County as a whole. So all the properties, all the parkland, all the conservation, whether it be state, county, municipality, those are all included. We did talk to the people that were responsible for each incorporated town to see which projects they had on the horizon, so that, you know, is in there as well.
Okay. Anybody else?
Thank you. Thanks.
If the county manager sees fit, may we address items D and E first?
I was just going to say, Mr. President, if you want me to move with the county manager report.
That would be great.
Okay, I'll start out with Preston while he's sitting here. So council, I will be going in reverse this evening.
Okay.
So the first item that Preston's here to discuss with you is Department of Parks and Recreation is requesting to award a contract for the construction of pickleball courts at the Talbot County Community Center utilizing FY23 local parks and playground infrastructure grant funding. As you read your agenda packet, requesting council approval to award the contract for the construction of eight pickleball courts to the community center to ATC Corporation in the amount of $370,204.50. Talbot County will be piggybacking on a national cooperative purchasing alliance contract for this project. The project, again, will be funded through the local parks and playground infrastructure grant issued by the state of Maryland. And Preston is here to speak and answer any questions relative to this request.
So both this request and the other request that I had tonight, this is the, like Clay said, this is the LPPI funds that we receive from the state. This is the million dollars that we, that every county in the state of Maryland was allotted at least a million dollars. It was based on population. These are funds that have to go towards improvements as far as recreation goes. It doesn't go towards acquisition, and it can't go towards a lot of infrastructure. So this is all directly recreation-related. So the nice thing about this is these funds do not require a match. So these are 100% reimbursed.
Make a motion to approve the request.
Second.
Madam Secretary, we've got a motion to second to approve pickleball courts and necessary stuff for the parks and rec.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
The next request will be from Preston as well for the Department of Parks and Recreation to award a contract for dugouts and playgrounds at the Talbot County Community Center and a playground at Back Creek Park utilizing FY23 local parks and playground infrastructure or LPPI grant funding, as he just explained. As you read your agenda packet, requesting council approval to award a contract to Game Time Playground Solutions in the sum of $478,709.10 for these dugouts and a playground at the community center and a playground at the Back Creek Park. And Preston is here to answer any questions relative to this request.
And again, these are the funds that are coming from the LPPI money. This is, the playground at the community center has run its course. It's due to be taken down, much like the one was at Back Creek Park in Tillman. So the one at the community center is our highest utilized playground, obviously, in the county as far as county parks go. So having that one put back up was a necessity, and obviously, there was a heavy request for the one to go up back in Back Creek Park in Tillman.
Absolutely, yep. I'm so proud of you, Preston. So proud of you.
So it sounds like there's a couple hundred thousand dollars left. Will we be hearing back from you on finishing out the million dollars?
Yes.
Yes. You have a couple other projects in mind?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Good. With that, I'll make a motion to approve the contract for dugouts and playgrounds.
And I'll second, and I'd just like to address real quick, the Tillman Action Committee. I would really like to thank them for staying on this. I know there's been a lot of frustration. There's been a lot of delays, a lot of times that they just wish that we could have done it much faster. That is an excellent group of organized individuals who have solved many of their own problems, who most people never hear about because they don't complain and write nasty letters and treat people like dirt. These are individuals who are caring and compassionate about their community. They have input as well as buy-in, and they work hard to achieve their goals. I want to thank the time that Preston attended the meetings. Clay Stamp, even when I wasn't able to attend, Chuck Callahan came down, and Joe Gamble has been down many times to work with them on issues that they have. This is proof of when you stay organized, you stay polite, and you have buy-in, the things that you can accomplish. And I'm very excited for this playground to go through. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeVilleo, and I would echo that, too. I'm really happy for that community, that's for sure, because they've been waiting several years for this, and they definitely deserve it. So, so do we have a, we've got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Yes. Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Preston.
Council, the next request I have is asking for your permission to request a local delegation, our local delegation to prefile correction officers retirement system course, membership legislation for Talbot County. As you read in your agenda packet, requesting council approval to send a letter to the local delegation, asking them to prefile the legislation to allow Talbot County to participate in the in the correctional officers retirement system, which is a part of the Maryland State Retirement System. If you do recall, you authorized the letter to be sent, and it just went in a little bit late. It didn't make it through the process, and if, if you move on this, we can get in on the front and have it prefiled and not have that problem occur again this next year.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Sounds good. I mean, it went through unanimously very quickly in the Senate, and it didn't have time in the House. Now, of course, we're going to have different delegation, you know, assuming that the delegate mounts wins the Senate seat, you know, and, but we will have at least one new, at least one new delegate. So, we might need to, I don't know what the timing of that is with the election not being until November. They don't get sworn in until January.
Mm-hmm.
So, I guess we just need to make sure that, that the two that have been around that are currently, but get, get the letter. Hopefully, that won't be any issues.
So, what, what, if, if counsel so approves, once, you know, once we gain your approval, then we will monitor and make sure that we get that letter ready for your signature, get it out at the appropriate time to the proper people.
Mr. Pack, I would love to second your motion.
Yeah, I'll make the motion. Thank you, Mr. DeVilleo. But let, before we take your vote, Mr. Callahan, let me just, let me just add that. You know, this, this was one that's been on this council's radar, members of this council's radar for some time. You know, we were able to get our law enforcement moving to the LEOPS relatively quickly and with, with some ease that surprised me in, in making that move. Our detention center employees who are also under very stressful situations, are currently in the state system, which puts them into a, I believe, a 32-year retirement. And if you know anything about this type, that type of work, when you're under constant stress of working with incarcerated persons, it, it tends to wear on you over time. So, allowing them to go into the cores system would put them into an early retirement system. I believe Kent County, if I'm correct, Mr. Stamp, has already gone into cores. So, they're all, already a move afoot of some counties who are making this move to bring their correctional officers under the cores system. Our officers are faithful, loyal employees, and they're being asked each and every day, really, to, to supervise and, and hold persons who are on either federal or sometimes even state charges before being adjudicated. So, we're dealing with the same people, pre-adjudication of theirs, that, that they're going to see in DOC. So, I think this is just a, a proper way to go, to move them into the cores system. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Pack.
Anybody else? Mr. Pack, do you want to make the motion?
I thought I did. I thought you seconded already. Yeah, you seconded already.
I seconded.
Okay. Okay. So, we've got a motion second to move forward with the correctional department to, to get the cores started up.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Thank you, counsel, for that. I'll try not to get on the soapbox, but I certainly am proud, as you are, of our employees. We are going through difficult times, and they are the heart of our community. They have a heart of service. They're public servants. They're day in and day out, doing the hard work. And in this case, I'm sure that our correctional officers will be quite appreciative of your action. So, thank you. The next item I'll call up, Rich Sutter, the director, or, or golf professional, for a request. As he comes up here, a request from Hog Neck Golf Course to award a contract for the installation of a new HVAC, or I should say, new HVAC units for the pavilion renovation project. As you read your agenda packet, requesting council approval to award a contract to Velocity HVAC for the installation of three five-ton heat pump systems for the pavilion at Hog Neck Golf Course in the amount of $54,789. There are sufficient funds in the FY-23 budget for this project, and they did receive three quotes for the project. Brian Moore has been working with Rich, our facilities maintenance director, on this project as well. And Rich is here to answer any questions or explain any further detail that you might find necessary.
I, I do have show and tell.
Oh, we have.
So, we have a slideshow of the pavilion.
Yeah.
And some of the improvements that we've gone along in this project. I was here a few weeks ago, and it's just kind of progressing along here. Now, we're at the point where we're talking HVAC.
I figured it was the broken window he had that ball through that you were going to show.
It's a wind shield.
So, we think I can just scroll down.
Oh, you, you have the.
He has a mouse right there.
In front of you, Rich, on, on the table.
I'm doing it?
Yes.
I give the control, though?
You have control.
Wow, this is awesome.
Oh, look at that.
All right. So, that's the picture of the pavilion. It's an open-air pavilion, and the issue we had with this pavilion is that we couldn't sell it. You can't sell an open-air pavilion, because, say you want an event on September 1st, you don't know if the wind's blowing 20 miles an hour and it's raining, and the rain is blowing through the pavilion. So, we, it was a facility that the only time we use it is when we have a golf outing, and the golf outing was in, you know, nice weather, and then we'd go in there for lunch afterwards. So, trying to utilize the facility to make it more of a revenue generator for us. Again, this is another photo here of the old existing pavilion. As you can see, open all the way around. And here, we started the construction. We're framing that in on two sides, and you'll see as we go along in the photos here, two sides will be garage doors, clear garage doors, so you can maximize the view. And this is the other framed inside right here. And these used to be brown metal pillars. They've all been framed out with AZAC, makes it look a lot nicer, very appealing to the eye. And there you see the garage doors that are in. So, there's nine total doors that go around the two sides of the building, maximizing the views to the golf course from there. And there you see the interior look with the framed-in wall. I think we'll have all kinds of success, having all types of different events in there, from, you know, crab feast, which we have in there today.
Hmm.
I have a big group of golf course superintendents that are doing a pig roast there and a crab feast. I can see Christmas parties in there at holiday time, family reunions, eventual weddings possibly. So, all kinds of different events that we can utilize that facility for.
That looks great.
It does. It really does.
And Rich, let, let me just say, very quickly, I want to give you a shout-out. You know, this, this was your vision that you shared with us some time back as far as closing this pavilion in, to maximize its use, but also as a, as a revenue generator as well. I, I think it looks wonderful. I can't wait to go out there. I think we're out there later next, my justice left, for the county event.
September 15th.
September 15th. Thank you. So, I can't wait to get out there to see it. The, as far as cooking, is the, is there a grill inside that's vented out, or you have to cook outside and bring items in?
Outside, bring items in.
Yeah.
The reason we kept that solid wall right there, Mr. Pack, was so that a catering company or any caterers could prepare food just outside those doors, and then you wouldn't be visible in terms of the guests seeing what's going on. So, it's silent behind the scenes, and then you can bring it right in.
Got you. Great. Great. It looks wonderful, Rich. Congratulations on this.
Thank you.
Yep. Ms. Price?
It's amazing. Again, the same thing as everybody else is saying, very excited about that and enjoy the pavilion in a few weeks when we go out there. So, thank you.
Make a motion, motion to approve the, to award the bid.
Okay. We got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
And Rich, did you say you were treating the council to crabs when we got out there?
Hey, Rich, I do, you know, because I am the liaison out there, and I, I can't thank you enough for bringing the whole course up to, to another level, okay? Because between Preston and you, that's the first thing everybody sees when they come into Talbot County, and it's vital, vital, that we have a top-notch golf course and a top-notch hockey rink in Parks and Rec. And, and for you, for you in the last several years in the position you've been in, I try to play golf and stuff, but just, just the people alone comment how good a job you do out there.
Well, thank you. Appreciate it.
You really do. So, you, you really have run that place well. So, I, I just want to commend you, because we need you.
Well, one of my strengths is golf lessons, sir, so.
Yep. Yep.
Haven't seen, haven't seen you for that yet.
There's no hope, man. You know?
I only have one problem with what you said.
What?
You called it a hockey rink.
Well, okay.
I'm sorry. Former figure skater.
Okay. Figure skater. Okay. All right. Okay.
Other than that, everything's so was great.
Okay. I got you. I got you. Ice rink. Ice rink. So, but anyway, all kidding aside, you really have, have made it a destiny for pla, a destination for people, and we really appreciate everything you do. And I'll try to make the meetings, okay? I apologize. Try to make those meetings.
Well, I appreciate all your support, every one of you, so.
Yep.
I, I got more. I'll be back again, so.
Okay. Okay. Appreciate everything.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. And counsel, the last item I have under boards and committee appointments, this is for the local emergency planning committee, requesting the appointment of Joyce Harrod to represent the town of St. Michael's, and the appointment of Cheryl Lewis representing the town of Oxford.
So, moved?
Second.
Okay. Motion second, Madam Secretary. Could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
And counsel, that concludes your county manager report for this evening. Thank you.
Okay. That sounds great.
Nobody has signed up to speak this evening.
Nobody has? Okay. All right. All right. We're down. Uh-oh. Okay. Yes.
I didn't sign up. I'm sorry.
Yes, yes, sir. Come on up.
Would you like me to sign up right now?
No, no. You can just, if you explain your name, I'll write it down for you. Thank you.
Yeah, if you just don't mind coming on up and saying who you are. Yep?
Appreciate you having me.
Yeah, sure.
My name is John Forgash, and I'm here representing Soul Harvest Energy. We're a renewable energy development company, and we've been working with the county since about January earlier this year on a community solar project.
Uh-huh.
Located just north of Cordova. And just wanted to provide just a little bit of feedback in terms of the amendment that was raised today about the prime farmland and, as, as someone that's been involved with, in the industry for over 15 years, 14 years, I totally understand what the county is trying to accomplish. But I'm just a little bit concerned in terms of what that may do for projects that are already under development, smaller projects or projects that are, you know, moving through the development stage in the county. And as I mentioned, we've been working with the county since January. Our project has received input from various stakeholders throughout the process, and we have also received a recommendation from the Planning Commission and then approval from the Board of Appeals for it. I'm not exactly sure what, whether or not this project would be impacted by the amendment that's being proposed, but, you know, the type of project that we're developing is more or less a, you know, is a much smaller project, a project that almost qualifies under the, I believe it's the medium type of solar project that's defined in the, in the zoning ordinance. And, you know, as I mentioned, if, if there is a blanket type of amendment that's, that's put into place, it may, it may impact projects that may not have been intended for that type of, of purpose.
Yes, sir. So, when you say a smaller project, how, how, how medium-sized is your project?
So, the project that was approved was a two-megawatt project, and it was going to be sited on about 17 acres.
Okay.
17 or 18 acres. I believe right now, the zoning ordinance defines a medium-sized project as two megawatts, but on 10 acres or less. And, you know, as a developer in this industry and someone that's been working on the eastern shore for quite some time, overall, it's just very difficult, as it is, to find any site really for these projects. There are so many constraints that we have to deal with on a day-to-day basis, from interconnection to topography, to our parcels that are already preserved, to landowners that aren't interested. You know, you go down the list. And to, I guess, keep adding on more and more constraints or potential constraints to potential project sites is, is really just going to make it almost impossible to develop any type of project in the county. And then on top of that, I think Zach and I were talking about this earlier, too, is, you know, these smaller types of projects aren't, don't have a separate CPCN process that essentially can maneuver around some of the, the local rules and regulations. So, these projects really have to abide by what the county puts forth and really includes in its zoning ordinance. We don't have, you know, the opportunity to, to, you know, have the state over, overrule or anything along those lines. And then finally, I think, what's also important, I believe, is that from a process standpoint, the county already has a, a review process that we have to go through, that the, that our project in particular already did go through, in terms of, you know, getting a recommendation from the Planning Commission and, and then ultimately approval with conditions on how, you know, obviously, this moratorium shakes out. Put an approval for that as well. So, I think that process is already in place for the county to be picky in terms of which projects it believes has the merit to move forward, you know, and in locations where it has the merit to move forward.
Okay. Well, thank you.
I, I just wanted to add one thing. You know, John started this process, like you said, December, January of, December of last year, January of this year. Went through the process, got sort of halfway through it, and the county enacted this moratorium that was concerning, but he understood. He participated in the Planning Commission discussion, the workshop. He had the input on that. All the regs that came from the Planning Commission worked for him. I mean, it increased his costs, but he felt like he could still make the project work.
Right.
This most recent amendment pulls the rug out from under him, he can't do his project. And so, I think that's just incredibly concerning for John. I mean, we haven't seen the exact language. Based on the description, it sounds like he would. And so, I know that's why John came here tonight. Obviously, he can come back on the 13th and add comment, but I know it's such an urgent issue for him because he feels like he's been in the game up to this point, and now all of a sudden, the rug is being pulled out from under him.
Got you. Okay.
And then there's also a concern for other projects that are falling within the community solar program or projects that, you know, deliver energy to local ratepayers and, you know, the, the LMI community as well, too.
Yeah, okay, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Lusher?
Counsel comments? School's starting. Drive safely.
Okay. No comment. Okay. Mr. Pack?
All right, yeah, this is very quickly, I'll echo Mr. Lusher's comments, you know, with the, with the beginning of school. Just wanna wish all of our students a safe beginning of the school year. We know that many school districts around the country are struggling right now in getting, getting teachers in the classroom. I think there's one school district, I believe, out in Ohio that's, have a big teacher's strike going on. So, the substitutes are at a premium, and we need to continue working with our school board and new administrator, superintendent to assist them any way we possibly can. I know we have a scheduled meeting taking place sometime later this month to sit down and talk with them. So, and just very quickly, I hope that my comments regarding the resolution 331, we're, we're not meaning to put anyone on the spot or meaning to cast any kind of dispersion upon anyone. My comments were just based on my concerns about how our school system may be impacted by, by new development and what we can. I mean, we have a very limited voice on a lot of developments that take place within incorporated towns, and when we have the opportunity to weigh in, I think we should. There should not be a point of just rubber stamping and moving on, but ask the appropriate questions and, and make sure that you do your due diligence to see where any kind of mitigation can be, can be applied. So, again, didn't want anyone to take my comments to demean anyone. I was just trying to get some things, some concerns of mine out in the open. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pack. Ms. Price?
Well, we had a amazing Maryland Association of Counties conference, summer conference last week. First thing I want to do is thank the staff that was involved, Cassandra and Karen and Parker, who manned the booth. And I'm sure, you know, every county has the same thing. We brought back Taste of Maryland and had a thousand oysters.
Mine was about eight.
Mine is about 999 that Mr. Pack ate. And that was, they were very, very popular. We had other staff that were able to come around and, you know, visit the IT that, that was, that was set up there and other educational sessions. And I know our new finance director was able to participate in that. So, I just want to thank Talbot County for its support. And going to that, I know all of my fellow council members made it over there in various capacities. We had an opportunity to meet with Maryland Department of Transportation to set up what our priorities are for our upcoming CTP in, I think it's in October. We, just a little bit about the conference, though. I mean, we, the governor gave the opening address, so I was honored to be able to introduce him. That was really wonderful. It was a bigger audience. He gets that than a Saturday morning, 'cause I think what I said was on Saturday morning, everybody is recovering. So, it was a little smaller on Saturday, but on Saturday, we had a candidate forum with five of the six major party nominees for Attorney General and for Comptroller and for Governor. And all of them were making their way around. Lots of senators and delegates bringing together, I think, really for the, it was a full conference last summer, but this time, you know, having so many of the locally elected officials and the senators and delegates really interacting. People were so much more comfortable this year, and I, we blew out the record books. The largest conference, when you add all of the, the exhibitors and the elected officials and staff, 2019 was the largest at 3,100. We had 3,600 bodies at the conference last week, and it, it really had an amazing vibe. People were very happy and participated in everything. Were out and about during the day and out and about during the night. So, it, it really was a wonderful conference and very beneficial. People think, oh, my gosh, they're just going to Ocean City for four or five days. Let me tell you what. We work hard, and we make connections that are invaluable by the time we get around to legislative session in Annapolis in, in the fall. And those, those relationships are, are so incredibly important. So, I just want to thank everybody in the county for their participation with it, and a shout-out to the Mako staff for putting on an amazing conference.
Thank you, Ms. Price. I appreciate that. And I just want to thank the staff, too. And Jess, you held the fort down back here for us, okay? So, I want to appreciate, I really appreciate what you've done back here when, when we're, you know, doing our thing there. So, and Mr. Stamp, you, you were heading, heading everybody up, too. So, we really want to thank you for being down there and, and helping us get through it and, you know, walking us around and not letting me know where things are at, okay? So, that was good, you know, so, and, but, other than that.
Ready to close it down?
Close her down.
The county council's next meeting will be held on Tuesday, September 13th, beginning at 6:00 PM. The council will also be, will, will be convening an open session at 4:30 PM and then adjourning into closed session to discuss real estate, legal, and personnel matters as listed on the statement for closing that meeting. Therefore, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting and reconvene, reconvene as noted?
So, moved?
Second.
We got motion second to adjourn. Madam Secretary?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?